All right, I got six o'clock. Some occult meeting to order. Roxanne, if you take role. Everyone would stand for the pledge allegiance and the invocation.
Do adjourn. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, I thank you for these men and women who have taken the time out of their lives to make the decisions for our community. Father, we recognize that all wisdom comes from you. And I ask this morning, or this evening, rather, Father, that you would cause your wisdom to be present in this place. And that you would help these members here and these citizens to find the joy that we have in living in a country where we're free. And find the happiness in being, even when we disagree with one another in community, Father, in community in a civil way. We thank you for this place and time and history. We ask that you would help these people to make decisions that will make tomorrow an even better day as we look on it in years to come. Father, we pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Joel.
Has the council had time to review the agenda for this evening? I move we approve the agenda. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Now is our time for public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? All right.
Hi. My name's Jan Sieg, and I am here this evening on behalf of the Iola High School Booster Club. We have recently joined efforts with Josh Oberle of Modern Woodman and Coach Doug Kerr of the football team in trying to spruce up or revitalize the stadium over there. So far, we have painted quite a bit of the interior where everyone sits. Mr. Kerr has gone as far as remodeling the locker room for our team. We haven't got to the visitors yet, as well as a referee's room. It kind of looks like a closet, but it's a room. What we're looking to do, and that's where you all come in, is we would like to pour some concrete sidewalks on the south side of the stadium that would connect all five entrances to the street. And from what I understand, that property is actually city-owned, so I guess approval is forthcoming first. Other than that, we do have a quote, and we would have Modern Woodman is going to split that with us. But we wondered if we might fall under the realm of the sidewalk replacement program that you all have and get some of the, not the labor, but some of the product deferred. So that's our request to you all tonight.
Awesome. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
Do we have any idea of the approximate cost?
The quote for the labor and the materials came in at $3,100. If I understand right, your program is $1.75 per square foot. The quote on that was 778 square feet. So I think that the city's share would be $1,360. What we've found is, right now, if you've noticed, there's about five to six feet of grass between the street and the stadium. So you walk through grass, potentially mud, and you drag that all back into the stadium.
I think the reason that they were initially not qualified for it because they're not replacing existing sidewalk, but since it's the city's, they're asking for a waiver on that, I guess.
Yeah, but I got it. There wasn't a sidewalk there at all.
Yeah, but isn't the program for replacement as opposed to new? That's why we wondered if we would fall under that umbrella.
Well, it's kind of up to the council. I mean, we have set aside funding for sidewalk replacement to encourage people to replace broken sidewalks. So if you use it for something like this, an improvement. In the past, we have not used up all the money that was budgeted, so I guess it's just up to the council if you want to expand that a little bit and use it for something else.
I'll go ahead and move that we approve the use of the city sidewalk replacement for this project and give them rights to, you need the rights because it's on city, and give the Iola high school boosters rights to build that sidewalk up pending. We shouldn't have any problems with that, should we? Okay.
And setting the limit $1,360?
Well, that's per square foot.
Per square foot, a dollar, whatever it is.
Sean will figure that.
Okay.
I second that motion.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your right hands. Thanks. There you go. Thanks. Sounds good. Any more public comments?
I'm sure glad you approved that because I've been bending everyone's ear. I got invited down to see the stadium. I haven't been in it in several years. I've been there, but Ray couldn't get up the stairs, so I hadn't been in it. It hasn't changed since Ray was a coach, and that is disgraceful. I was appalled at how filthy the, I know you don't own it anymore. I know the school owns it, but you all know as well as I do, the school's not going to spend any money there. It's going to go elsewhere. But I think CITF is looking into helping them with their drainage problem. And when they have, you know, the street's built up and the track's built up. And if you go down there and just walk by the boys' dressing room, which by the way was put on when Ray was a coach, and it's low. And so everything that drains, drains right into that dressing room, and water goes in it constantly. And on what Jan was talking about, same thing happens out in front. If you walk in that big gate on the most south side, you're going to walk through mud if it's been raining. And so I'm certainly glad you did it because it's disgraceful. And the visitor's dressing room is more disgraceful than I can even tell you. I think all councilmen and women should go down there and look at it. It is horrible to think we're a city of pride and have something that horrible. And if you look, the parents, Jan's one of them, and the coach have painted the front sides of the bleachers, which I don't think they've been painted since I've been here. That's been '66. And they run out of paint, and so if you just go over on the path and look back this way, you'll see how nice that looks. And the rotary is not doing their seats, and they're in pretty bad shape, too. Dawn Bain and I were talking in the grocery store the other day, by the way, that's her dad, in case you don't know. We were talking, and he said, "I can remember when they replaced those seats," and I said, "I can, too," and that's been at least 40 years or 30. And he said, "That's about right." So it's pretty bad. I'm glad you voted for that. Thank you. Now, I wanted to say nice things. Thank you for leaving that swimming pool open. It was wonderful all year long, clean. The swimming pool's been really clean the last few years, and I've been around long enough, it's not always been clean, but the last few years. And I appreciate you having the swim pool. The other thing I want to say is the path. Anyone that doesn't go on that path, you're missing out some of the beauty of nature. I was trying to show Cory something today. I saw a greenhouse. It looked like to me, and I wanted to make sure there wasn't dope being spread because our belt grow, because I go by it, and I didn't want to be in an unsafe territory. But anyway, the path is wonderful, and it's so smooth compared to what else I ride on just in the city limits. If you haven't ridden both ways, it's twice as smooth. Thank you. Oh, see here, Iola Friday.
Thanks, Dawn. Do we have any other public comments? All right. Thank you. Consent agenda. Has the council had time to review the consent agenda this evening?
I have.
Beverly, you have any comments or questions?
I was just going to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Consent agenda. Thank you. Unfinished business, item A, a hands-free driving resolution. What have we got here, Carl?
The council requested at previous council meeting to have a resolution put together that would communicate to the county and the state legislature their wishes on supporting some kind of distracted driving, hands-free driving statute. So this is here for your consideration.
We need a motion.
Well, I think it depends on what the council wants to support. So, I mean, this would not enact anything, but it would at least communicate to our county officials and give encouragement to the state to possibly bring this back up again at the next legislative session. So if the council adopts this resolution, then I would send it on to the county and to our local state representatives.
Carl, what year did Manhattan enact their ordinance? Do you know?
I'm thinking it was 2010.
No, because I lived there and got pulled over.
While we still look into things like signage and enforcement and a couple of the issues, I think this is a step in the right direction. I will go ahead and move we approve Resolution 2015-17. I was going to guess 16. It's close. -17, and instruct, authorize the mayor to sign it. I will also add and instruct staff to send it to our representatives and senators in the area and the county.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Mr. Kerris, thank you. New business, item A, feasibility study. David?
Mayor, Council, I'm David Tolland, representing Thrive Allen County. Here requesting the council and the city participate on a hotel feasibility study, which would evaluate whether additional hotel rooms would be justified in the city of Iola. There's a number of reasons, I think, to do this, one of which is that the city, the exception of last year, has generally seen a decline since 2008 in our bed tax receipts. Some of that is, at least anecdotally, due to when the crossroads had converted to basically a 30-day model. At that point, the bed tax is not in effect. But, you know, there may be a question of whether the rooms that we have are providing what it is that travelers are looking for and have the kind of conference facilities that are in demand. I spent Friday in Fort Scott listening to a presentation by the owner of the Sleep Inn, which is a new 59-room hotel, which you may have seen on 69. It's right downtown, three stories. That hotel opened last November. Since it opened, their bed tax receipts are up 66% over the previous year. That's comparing June of this year to June of the previous year before it had opened. Their situation had been somewhat similar to Iola's, where you had national-brand hotels that switched down to more regional brands, and you had less of a robust hotel market. Like I said, they have 59 rooms there. They employ 18 people, and it's a beautiful facility. I don't know whether Iola can support additional rooms. That's why there are professionals who evaluate these kind of things and who are equipped to give us good data, and not only us as a community, but more importantly, the hotel corporations that make these types of decisions. I have gotten a proposal, which is in your packet, from hospitality marketers. So we're talking about less than $5,000, $4,950 for the field research hotel evaluation study. Iola Industries will pay 50% of that 49-50 cost if the city will pick up the other half. I have had conversations with both Choice Hotels, which includes the Sleep Inn brand and Comfort Inn, and with Best Western. Best Western has made a site visit here. They have both said that they would accept a feasibility study by this particular firm. This is a reputable company, from what I can tell, and I think it's a good cost to the city. You know, if you look at what a 66% increase in bed tax could mean for Iola, those are dollars that go back to support community events that bring more people to town. So for a personal example, or a Thrive example, the Charlie Melvin Mad Bomber run has had some support for a number of years from this, from the transient guest tax. We use that to promote that event in out-of-town markets, and you hope that these people come here and they stay the night, and that they spend money in our restaurants, and have a positive net economic impact. It would be nice if we could increase the size of the pie here and grow a bigger pie. And this is not to compete with any particular hotel this is here. This is to provide a new option and more options for travelers. Be happy to take questions.
David, is this something that they would actually conduct after 54 is opened back up again?
Yes. Good question. We will schedule this for following, they will not begin work until the reopening of 54.
Okay. Yeah, because otherwise, I don't think we would get an accurate assessment, so.
Agreed.
Does the study address vacancy? Is it addressing what people are looking for? You mentioned conference rooms and, I think, just the quality in general of the rooms. Is a study like this going to address just basically on how many rooms are available? Are they able to drive and drill into what folks are actually looking for when they come through?
They will actually evaluate the properties that are here. They will evaluate the employers that are here and go to them. So for example, with Gates, they'll say, "Okay, Gates, how many, how many people are you bringing in annually to Iola from Denver? You know, what are you hearing from these guests, from these employees?" They will go down and look at what events come to town. And that's not just Iola, but that's Humboldt. So the Humboldt Speedway, for example, they have events which fill up rooms in Iola and fill up rooms in Chanute. So they'll take a regional look and figure out, okay, where are these people staying and what does it, what, if anything, is lacking in the current options?
David, if we do decide to approve this, I would suggest adding the college on to that list, because I know every year we have, right now, 10, 15 students, just to make sure that that may not be somewhere that they normally think of asking, "What are you all looking for?" What?
But we've got students that will be in the hotel room long-term until rooms open up, so.
Right. And that is one of the variables that we'll want to make sure they understand, so that when they evaluate what's the current occupancy rate of these hotels, those students throw it off a little bit. You know, those aren't business travelers. Those aren't people driving down the road. And so, you know, that's a variable that I think is a good one, so we'll make sure of that.
What impact, if any, would you anticipate Chanute's new travel center having on the study that will be opening in a few years?
Well, I guess I would say that I know Chanute has been trying to put together the travel center deal for a number of years. As long as I've been in economic development, that has been supposedly on the cusp of happening. I know the loves portion of this is locked down and in place. My understanding is the hotel is not a done deal yet. And so, you know, I feel to a certain extent, and I'm a big believer in regionalism, and I work well with our counterparts in Chanute, but, you know, we've got to be aggressive if we want to get travelers and have them stay in our community.
I will say one thing, David, and I don't think capacity is our issue, because every month I put 75 to 100 soldiers in two of the hotels local and have never had a capacity problem with, and that's before Regency became a viable hotel for us. So.
You know, I think you might be right, but I think unless we study this, I mean, we're willing to spend $1,300 on some sidewalk, and here we're asked for $2,450-ish.
The sidewalk money's already budgeted, though.
Yeah, but we can take this, we can take this out of development funds, out of industrial development funds. We can take this out of council funds. You know, this is a relatively small, and if push comes to shove, I would gladly take $2,400 out of the $25,000 we have set aside for sidewalks to try to grow something. And we're not going to know this until we actually do the study. I mean...
And I would agree with that, too, because I know as a traveler traveling down the highway, we're not apt to pull into a hotel that is not a name brand that we know is decent. I'd rather spend more money and stay somewhere that I know has a good reputation than pull off the road and stay in someplace that I've never heard of before. It's not, it's not worth the risk to me, and I know that there's a lot of travelers out there. So to quantify that, I mean, you really do have to find out what are those people traveling on those highways that come through our city? What are they looking for?
Is there land available for this, or would that be another item we'd have to address in the future?
We tend not to talk about land publicly, just because then you get speculators and prices go up. But there are a limited number of places where I think you would expect a new hotel of this type to want to locate, and they would tend to be near intersections of highways.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to have a chance to look at the hotel, or motel that we have, which we're scheduled tomorrow, before, because I'd like to see what they really have before I, before I vote for it. I would like to put it off until after I've seen it.
Just don't know if this is competition studying the issue. I think you can have lots of different hotels, whether they're small or large, and they all still thrive because they're at different market points, and I don't know if we're reaching a certain market point. I know that I have friends, business travelers, that they won't stay in a Super 8. Their company basically says, "You're not staying in a Super 8," and otherwise, they'll go two towns over and stay somewhere nicer, and that's where their company will put them up, just because they have deals on that kind of end, and they say, "You're not doing that." Now, me personally, I'll stay in the Super 8, and I lived in what was the one on, I think it was the Best Western. When I first moved here, I lived in there for about a month as I was looking for housing. Those are fine for me, but I have friends at different levels and companies at different levels. I just don't think that it's going to hurt to study this. We're not, you know, the study may come back and just say, "There's nothing we can do," but unless we know, unless we have the information, we actually can't make a good decision. And I just, you know, I don't think that they're going to be in competition with these other ones, somebody new coming in. I think it'll be actually pretty low there. You know, if you're coming in a new hotel, and the new hotel's $200 a night, and you've got budget hotels below it, I think people are going to gravitate to where they're comfortable. Because of that, I will go ahead and move we approve the request by Thrive for $2,475 to, that is 50% of the fee contingent on Iola Industries picking up the other half.
I have one more question. I know that this is a hospitality-based study, so hotels, and we're also looking at a study for housing with the new development. Is it any way possible to combine the two studies for cost savings?
Probably not. And the housing study is being paid 400% by Iola Industries.
I understand that.
But they're really apples and root of begus.
Okay.
But good question.
David, I've got, I've got a question for some, for people that were asking me about this over the weekend. Does this study, not just for, not just for the city of Iola or the economy as a whole, I guess it is the economy as a whole really, will this study take into account the impact of bringing another, a fourth major motel into, or hotel, into our community in terms of what that would do to the existing hotels?
I honestly don't know the answer to that. I don't know. I do know that, you know, the rule of thumb is that communities that want to have a good hotel market, the more rooms you have, the more everybody wins, because that becomes known as the place where you stop. And it's the place where you stop because you have a variety of options, and typically you have the services that go with hotels, i.e. restaurants. And so we've had a number of detailed restaurant discussions for the east side of town, and they want to know, well, where are you on hotel? And hotel wants to know, where are you with restaurant?
Sure.
So, I can also say in another community I worked in, the hotels went together to fund a feasibility study for a convention center hotel, because they knew that if there were a big hotel that could draw in conventions, it would fill up that hotel and fill up their rooms. And so I tend to look at this as growing the pie rather than trying to dice the pie into different-sized pieces. So this is not intended to hurt anyone. This is intended to make it a more robust hospitality market in Iola and Allen County.
I'll second the motion.
Sorry.
I'd like to second John's motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Can someone clarify where we're going to pay for it, out of, just so we get that on the record, where you want to fund it from?
You want to take this out of industrial? You want to take this out, what's the city council budget look like so far?
Broke.
Broke.
Like the rest of them.
I didn't bring that information.
Carl, if there's money in the council budget, pull it from there.
Can it be taken from the sidewalk fund?
Sidewalk fund's intended for sidewalks.
I understand that, but we also budget $25,000 a year for it, and where are we on that now?
Generally come under on that.
And you can't carry it over, correct?
I think the logical place for economic development is out of industrial fund or council budget.
I'd be fine with splitting it with either one of those or splitting it between the both equally.
Why don't you, why don't you make an amendment to your motion? That way we vote on that.
Yeah, okay. I will make an amendment to the motion and put that under the council budget. Can I second that still?
I'll second that.
Okay, now that that's clear, all in favor, please raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Oh, I'm sorry. All in opposition, please raise your right hand. Mister gentleman.
Thanks, Mayor.
Moving on to item B, financial audit engagement agreement. Carl, what do you have for us?
We need to select a firm to perform our annual audit. We've used Jared Gilmore &amp; Phillips the last three years, and they've given us a proposal to perform the 2014, or actually, the 2015 audit. It'll be the same proposed price that we've had on the last two audits. It'll be the same proposed price that we've had on the last two audits. The audit's to be conducted in compliance with the cash basis and budget laws of the state of Kansas. We also need to pass a resolution, which is required by Kansas statute. If we do not follow GAAP principles, generally accepted accounting principles. So the proposal is to approve the audit engagement agreement with Jared Gilmore and Phillips and to approve Resolution 2015-16, waiving the GAAP requirement and declaring intent to have the audit performed in accordance with the Kansas cash basis laws.
Have you been happy with them?
Yes, we have.
Then I make a motion that we approve the audit engagement agreed with Jared Gilmore Phillips, PA, to perform the audit for the city of Iowa for the year ending December of 2015 and authorize the mayor to sign the document.
I will second that.
I also make a motion to approve Resolution...
We can't, we can't stack them. We've got to wait.
That's right.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you.
And I make a motion to approve the Resolution 2015-16, waiving the GAAP requirement and declaring intent to have the audit performed in accordance with the Kansas cash basis law.
I will second that as well.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, New Business, Item C, Kentucky Street Parking. Carl, what have you got for us?
At the August 10 city council meeting, we had a discussion about traffic flow on Kentucky Street and feasibility or the need to restrict parking on that street because of the increased traffic going to the hospital. I did see a note in the paper to the effect that citizens were to contact their elected officials. As far as staff goes, I don't think we had anybody contact us, as far as I know.
I didn't have anybody.
Just saw some Facebook posts from the city council. That's the only information I saw come in on it.
I had one person contact me not in favor of it. I don't think they even live near Kentucky.
Carl, this, the 2014 traffic count, when was that?
Well, KDOT is the one who puts together their statistics and those maps, charts that show traffic counts throughout the state or for any metropolitan or city about our size. Don't think they come out annually, but this is the most recent one, which had traffic counts from 2014. So it would not reflect the traffic there since the hospital has opened. And these, these traffic counts are available on the KDOT website.
I think from Carpenter South, I don't think it's necessary to do anything with the parking.
Well, I think as mentioned at the last meeting, you know, once this was brought up, I paid a little closer attention, but it just seems to be some cars parked on the west side of the road, just north of Carpenter, or just north of Lincoln, I mean.
Yeah.
South of Carpenter.
Reach still wide till you get to Carpenter.
I don't think it's an issue north of there, but it's still, you're going to have ambulance traffic at higher speeds than normal, probably.
Well, to get to, yeah, north of Carpenter, I think you should... I never seen anybody park there anyway.
I just...
Saturdays. Yeah, maybe, maybe it does.
What's the expense of putting up traffic signs, no parking signs down that road?
Well, I don't know if an expense is such an issue, just a matter of whether the council feels that important to restrict parking.
I just don't think it's much of an issue around there. I mean, I run there and maybe once on garage sale day, but even then, I mean, you have the same issue with, with it on Garfield on garage sale day. And, you know, yeah, it's not as busy as Kentucky, but it's still another artery that's in and out and I just don't think it's, it's a real big concern of mine at this point.
Have any of the emergency personnel, have they said anything that it's an issue? Have we heard concerns from them?
No.
I mean, I would say those would be the people that if there were concerns, that they would be letting us know, hey, we're having trouble getting down this road.
If I remember correctly, the line item on sign replacements is about 1,000 a year.
It's not necessary.
I mean, I guess until it's actually an issue, let's not make it an issue.
It's not necessary now.
All right, sounds good. I think that's the general consensus. Let's move on.
Thank you.
Okay, New Business, Item D, Standard Traffic Ordinance and Uniform Public Offense Code. Ordinance 3449. Carl, what's the quick synopsis?
These ordinances are prepared, or the books are prepared by the League of Kansas Municipalities. They come out once a year. It's an effort to standardize the public offense code for Kansas cities and the uniform or the standard traffic ordinance, so there's, so each city doesn't get too far astray on what standard ordinances are. So we have a few exceptions that we take and we have a few additions, but pretty much the same as last year. So it's annual adoption of the STO and the UPOC.
I will move, we approve General Ordinance 3449 and I won't stack them.
I assume these are posted so people know the difference each year or...
They are not posted. We have copies at City Hall, so anyone who wants to can come and look at them.
They're also posted on the website.
Are they?
Oh, you mean the entire...
The book isn't, the book itself is not posted, I don't think.
Yeah, I just, I was thinking about the differences.
Because they don't, they don't post the whole things. That's, they get money for providing copies.
Yeah.
But we do have copies for reference.
And if anyone wants to see the changes, we put all the packets on the website, don't we? So you can literally see these ordinances.
Yes, all the ordinances are put on the webpage.
I don't have an issue with that, just want to be more aware.
Oh, you're waiting for a second?
Yeah.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
I will move, we approve General Ordinance 3450.
Second it.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Excellent, thank you. Item E, Southern Star Easement Request. Corey?
I can do it in two minutes or less. What I put in your packet, guys, is just a request from Southern Star. The West Town Border Station, you can see in that one, in the easement description on detail Y, it's got a description, there's a couple fenced-in areas. And if you've ever been over by our West Town Border Station, it's, there's two gas regulator stations. Ones are set on the east side and one is Southern Stars. Well, they were going to do some improvements over there and they found out they don't have an easement on our property. I think what happened over the years is the one to the east was actually Southern Stars or Williams back in the day. It was given to us and they built a new one and the easement never got transferred. So the only problem I have with this is I think they're asking for too much land from what they're doing. And I would just prefer that we only give them what they need at this point and then later if they need more, we can deal with it. We have had some issues in the past with us crossing their pipeline and within our easement and on our property. So I'd rather restrict it now and then if they want it later and need something else later, we'll go, we'll look forward to it. So I guess what I'm asking tonight is that you guys approve the easement with some changes. Basically, the recommendation is, is that, that we leave the fenced area as their gas transmission area essentially, and then outside that area would be just for their electronic equipment, that monitoring equipment that they're looking to install. I haven't got an updated version of this, but it'd just, the description would essentially be the same, but the, outside the fenced area would be for their new equipment.
Would they want to move their fence or build a bigger fence so that their electronic equipment isn't...
They've, they've got some buffer areas. That last sheet in there is, the other confusing thing is this is the second easement I've got from them, so, and both of them have been a little bit different. So, I mean, those two hatched areas, they've got to be so far away from a flange with those electronic devices, I guess. And that's, that's the need for some of that easement or the placement of that electronic equipment. They aren't, at this point, going to put in a new fence, so...
Well, if they're not going to do that, then I would say that I will make a motion, we approve the easement as presented with staff's recommendation and authorize the mayor to sign it.
That'd work.
I'll second it.
In the coming days.
And again, if they do need more, let them know that we're willing to do that too.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Good enough.
Paper.
Utility bill analysis. Council administrative reports. I don't know if anybody made it to the, down to the car show this weekend. It was very nice, there were a lot of cars. It's a nice weekend for that. People did a lot of work and it turned out real nice. John, what have you got for us?
Remember, schools are starting back up, means they'll be enforcing the school zones and the new no-stopping over at the middle school. And to keep your eye out, especially to and from schools around that time, kids are going to be back out in the streets and riding their bikes, et cetera.
Thanks, John. Nancy?
Good to be back. Looked like I missed a lot. Street looks good, all done, chipped and sealed. I didn't have to worry about it because I was gone. So just came home to my street done, which was really nice. And again, just reminding people, school's going to be back, so kids will be to and from school, so just, just remember, be on the lookout for all of that. So other than that, just good to be back home, even though it was a really, really good vacation.
Thank you, Nancy. Beverly?
Well, I have not much, except I want to say there's a lot of daredevil bike riders in town. I have encountered those a couple times, so you have to watch out for those very close. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Beverly. Bob?
Well, I'd like to thank the mayor and Chief Warner for being a judge at our, my son's car show and Teresa and Andy did a real good job and Brian Lindsay. They raised quite a bit of money for Hersch Crohn's. Had a real good turnout. Had a real nice day that day, Saturday. And they work hard at it, so I appreciate you guys doing the judging. I think we had 60 cars show up, almost 60.
Quite a few.
Yeah. That's it. Thanks, Bob. Don, what have you got?
Nothing today.
All righty. Austin?
Like Nancy said, it's good to be back. I did miss quite a bit too, seems like, we both did.
She's on vacation.
Yeah. My vacation was a little different.
Sorry.
That's all? That's all. It's good to be back.
Thank you. Sandy, what have you got?
Austin, thank you for your service.
Thanks.
All right, well, thank you. Aaron?
The other day I was walking by the middle school and there's still a sign up that allows for 20-minute parking from, right before school starts. It's just a sign on the north side of the road between Oak and Colburn. Should that, should...
It's the south side.
Okay. So we'll, we'll still allow 20-minute parking right there at the curb?
What we switched, the only thing we switched was the parking on the south side of East Street in that block, block and a half area. And then on the north side of the school, on the north side of Jackson, we switched those. Everything else essentially stayed the same, allowing for 20-minute parking there on the north side of East Street to let people go into middle school for a little while if they have to. And plus, it's still a loading and unloading zone. So hopefully that one side will help get that traffic through there. But that, yeah, and I can tell you that we spent, I think, $200 or so on the signs, so it was pretty inexpensive. We took down signs on existing posts and I think we moved maybe one. So it was pretty, pretty quick job. Thanks, Corey.
Thanks, Corey. And one other thing, I've had some, a few reports of losing power on the south end of town regularly, it's just kind of flickering. Is there anything going on with that? Could you...
Squirrel? I don't think we've had any particular trends on the south end of town. We, we've still had some problems with some breakers east. We had our electrical engineer out here last week trying to make some adjustments on a new breaker we had out there to stabilize it and I think they've got the equipment, the new equipment adjusted, so it really hasn't had its benefit yet.
So that was on the east side of town?
That's on the east, mainly in gas, from the east edge of the community east.
From the east edge of the community of Iowa to...
So it's mostly gas city in that area.
Aaron, can you figure out the address of the pinpoint location?
Okay.
The power was off in our neighborhood about 45 minutes last Friday.
For the storm.
In Southview.
That was the guy?
Oh, okay. I thought that was separate.
What happened? Are we having overload issues that, what's the issue with the east side of...
Oh, the east side of town?
Roxanne, what did you say?
The east side of town, if we have, on that particular circuit, if we have problems, we were trying to minimize the area that goes down when we have a problem. And so we put in some extra breakers out there, some new ones, so that not such a large area would go down when there's a little lightning strike or something like that.
Still working out some kinks on that, then?
Well, it's new equipment. It still wasn't solving the problem and so we had the electrical engineer come back again last week, try to figure out what, whether there was some adjustment we weren't making or they think they've got it figured out.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Carl, what else do you have for us?
Highlight two things. We, we have an agreement with a, with Scott Shreve, working with another gentleman, doing a utility billing analysis. They're going to look at all of our records on how we've billed, see if we've made any errors. It's not going to cost us anything. The way they'll get reimbursed is if there's any savings, if they discover any customers that we were not billing, then they will collect half of the increased revenue for one year. This was a referral from Scott Shreve, our energy consultant. They're going to look at all of our records on how we've billed, to see if we've made any errors. It's not going to cost us anything. The way they'll get reimbursed is if there's any savings, if they discover any customers that we were not billing, then they will collect half of the increased revenue for one year. Uh, this was a referral from Scott Shreve, our energy consultant. And this, we're kind of a startup, uh, community for him. Uh, he's got quite a bit of experience working with utilities in Topeka. And so we'll see how this works out for us. One other issue seems like, um, over the summer, when people mow their lawns, quite often they are mowing and leaving their grass clippings in the street. And the result is that when there's a rainstorm, it washes into our, uh, storm sewer system. We have problems with plugging up inlets. Not only does it look bad, but it, uh, has a bad side effect. And then as we get into the fall, a lot of people feel like, well, I'll just blow all my leaves to the curb and the city will take care of them because a street sweeper will come by. Well, it doesn't quite work like that. We have one street sweeper. That causes a lot of issues. Again, plugging up streets, or not streets, but it does plug up the inlets during a rainstorm. And then we have flooding issues because the inlets are plugged. So just encouragement to the residents, when you mow around your yards, make the first few passes so they blow inside or else clean up the street afterwards.
I did, I was going to mention, I saw that on Facebook today and I was glad to see that on Facebook. I just think it looks terrible, number one, to blow all that out into the street. But maybe a few more Facebook posts like that to, to kind of keep that going and, and something in the paper, just to remind residents, you know, that's not the best way to mow your yard. Blow it in for a while and then, you know, switch your, switch it around.
Also a big an edge along the curbs.
If you have curbs. Let's add that.
Real quick, before we move to adjourn, um, on the agenda, we still have that special meeting.
I have to move this.
The third?
Of September.
September at 5:30. Okay, it just wasn't on here and I wanted to double check.
And it will be at City Hall.
At City Hall. Okay.
In the courtroom.
All right, Carl. Thank you, appreciate it. Nothing else on the list. Don?
I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please raise your right hands. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, guys.